I'm going to call the April 4th Common Council Meeting Order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Alderman Hopefer?
Here.
Alderman Mayor?
Here.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Here.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Here.
Alderman Barber?
Here.
Alderman Nelson?
Here. Chair of the Court, please rise, join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, citizens' comment period. Any citizen wishing to speak on any item, please rise, come forward, give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to tell us. Ms. Stevens, good evening.
Sixth Street, and I am a candidate for District One Alder Person. And I just wanted to, since this is the last meeting of this current council, I want to take the opportunity in person and on the record to thank Alderman Mayor for his nine years of service. I really appreciated everything I've seen you do, and I put a lot of good things from your former constituents. And I hope that you have many more opportunities from colleagues and neighbors and constituents to show their appreciation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Chief.
I don't know if this is appropriate as chief to speak. Six zero four nine West Hillside Court. I just also wanted to take the opportunity to thank Alderman Mayor personally. I wouldn't be in this field if it wasn't for him. He steered me in this direction at a young age. Thanks.
And another.
Then I have to say it too.
Are there any Mayors or Remingtons, or?
No, we had a wonderful Alderman for the last nine years. And thanks, Dan, for everything.
That previous comment was from Mary Remington. No problem. Anybody else? Okay. I'll close the citizens' comment period. And we'll move on to the festivities. Where do I want to do this? This is going to get the best part of me. So I'm going to do this. This is a proclamation, recognition of, and gratitude for the services provided for and to the people by Daniel M. Mayor. Whereas Daniel M. Mayor is a descendant of and member of one of the founding families of Franklin, Wisconsin, of which we heard from several tonight. Whereas Daniel M. Mayor was hired by the City of Franklin as a paid-on-call firefighter June 5th, 1986. Hired as one of the original 12 firefighter paramedics for the Fire Department on August 1st, 1989. That was when he became full-time. Promoted to the position of Fire Lieutenant on February 20th, 1995. Promoted to position of Captain on January 5th, 1999. Notice a trend going on here. Promoted to the position of Battalion Chief on January 1st, 2002, and served as interim Fire Chief from March 29th, 2002 to December 1, 2002. And thereafter, served as Battalion Chief until his resignation on April 6th, 2009, receiving five commendations during his tenure, including two for lifesaving valor. And whereas Daniel M. Mayor, a graduate of Franklin High School, was elected to the Board of Education for Franklin Public School District on April 7th, 1998, re-elected April 3rd, 2001, and resigned March 27th, 2002 to serve as interim Fire Chief for the city. And whereas Daniel M. Mayor was hired by the City of Cudahy and served as the 15th Fire Chief for the city from April 7th, 2009 until his retirement, good for you, February 15th this year, last year. And whereas Dan was elected to the City of Franklin Office of Alderman, District 2, a great district, me too, on April 2, 2013, and has continued to serve and have been re-elected to the position, and his service continues through this date and time. And whereas Dan has been appointed to and confirmed and served as a member the Environmental Commission, the Personnel Committee, Technology Commission, the Fair Commission. And whereas Dan's term of office as Alderman will expire at midnight on the morning of the 3rd Tuesday of April, 2022. And whereas Daniel M. Mayor has dedicated his life to the service of others, now therefore be proclaimed that I, Stephen R. Olson, Mayor of the City of Franklin, Wisconsin, on behalf of all citizens, the staff of the City of Franklin, and all the public officials and staff who know you, worked with you, and all the people that you have served. Good luck and Godspeed, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll say some words. I promise I'll behave. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is like your high school or college graduation diploma. You have to check it first to make sure it's signed, to make sure it's legit. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my family, my wife Jill and my two boys. My wife would be here tonight, but we have a family situation going on. And my dog Teddy, who would be here, but he's got better things to do. My sister Mary Jane, who serves on the Park Commission. She was on the Parks Commission before I got here, and she's still there. And my nephew Adam, who's Fire Chief. And actually, in back of Adam is David R. Mayor's grandson, James Mayor. He's the Assistant Chief on the Fire Department. So thanks, everybody, and thank you all. I want to thank District 2 for putting their trust and faith in me for nine years. I never lost sight of the fact that they were the ones that I worked for and no one else. And so all the decisions I made were based on what District 2 citizens wanted. And it's very pleasurable to hear from my district, the kind words that they say. Thank you for your vote. Thank you for being there for us. Thank you for doing what's right. And when you get around the community at Pick 'n Save or Sendix, or the hardware store, or anywhere, one of the restaurants, oftentimes, people come up to me and say, Alderman, I'm not in your district, but thank you for standing up for us. Thank you for your vote. Thank you for doing what's right. And that's what this has always been about, is trying to do what's right for all of the citizens, especially District 2. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for your signature. I also want to say thank you to all of the staff from Peggy and Glenn, Sandy and Jesse, to Paul in the hallway, and everybody else in between. We have the greatest staff there is. They all have always been very attentive and resourceful and easy to work with. So thank you to everybody.
Dan almost had to show your first aid when I fell over that chair. Thanks again, Dan. Congratulations. Okay. Next item is Item C. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of the Common Council meeting of March 15th. Any additions or corrections? Barber and Mayor, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a hearing on special assessment for installation of water main on West Minnesota Avenue. Mr. City Engineer, you have a meeting notice to read.
Notice is hereby given that the Common Council of the City of Franklin has declared its intention to exercise its police powers under Section 66.0701, Wisconsin statutes, and Section 207-15 Franklin Municipal Code to levy special assessments for water main installation improvements in the following locations. West Minnesota Avenue bounded by South 51st Street to the west and South 49th Street to the east. This northward on South 49th Street approximately 50 feet. A report showing proposed plans and proposed assessments and other data is on file in the Clerk's Office at Franklin City Hall, 9229 West Loomis Road, Franklin, Wisconsin, 53132. Notice is hereby given that such report is open for review and inspection from Monday through Friday between the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon and 1:00 p.m. and 4:30 p.m. And will be so continued for a period of 10 days after the date of publication of this notice. Notice is also hereby further given that on Monday, April 4th, 2022, at 6:30 p.m., the Common Council will be in session in their chambers at Franklin City Hall, 9229 West Loomis Road, Franklin, Wisconsin, 53132, to hear all persons interested, their agents or attorneys concerning the matter contained in the preliminary resolutionary report, including proposed assessments. If you have any questions, contact City Engineer Glenn Mara at 425-7510. By order of the Common Council of the City of Franklin, Wisconsin, on the 4th day of February, and it was actually published 2022. 2014, this is in the packet, but it was published in the newspaper and on the bulletin, it's 2022. Sandra L. Wazakowski, City Clerk.
Okay. It appears we have a properly noted public hearing. And now, Mr. City Engineer, give us the highlights on what we're taking a hearing on, please.
I have a short presentation regarding this matter. First of all, to describe the area. So it's south of Rossin Avenue, and it's east of South 51st Street, specifically on Minnesota Avenue. The street that you can't see to the south is Marquette Avenue and Pleasant View Elementary School would be to the southeast. This benefits nine single-family residential homes, and we'll talk in a little bit what benefit means. Common Council established the project limits after considering survey responses from property owners in the area. Water looping connections are at South 51st Street and South 50th Street, and the water main will terminate on South 49th Street approximately 50 feet north of West Minnesota Avenue intersection.
Before you leave that, explain what water looping means.
Water is best served if it has a continuous loop where it flows in one side and out the other, so you don't have dead-end spots and creates dead issues with water taste, water odors, those sorts of things. There are preliminary plans. The preliminary plans were prepared for west of 50th Street, and they were prepared in 2020 and 2021. It's based on an 8-inch system, which is the minimum size for a water main system in Franklin. The final plans for the entire project are under contract, but with enough information based on our preliminary plans, we were able to estimate the entire project cost, and that's what we based my report on. Inside the report, there is an estimate of probable cost. I know you can't read on the screen very well, but it contains 830 linear feet of water main system. This does not include the water main on South 50th Street. The total estimate, and I'll stress a couple of times throughout this presentation, this is only an estimate, is $208,602.77. This includes engineering inspections, some contingencies, and a couple 1% service fees that are defined in the municipal code. Calculations and costs will be finalized once we complete the project and we have a final tabulation from the contractor. The benefit of properties are shown in red. These are existing, I'll say that the existing water customers are not included, so you'll see the dark shade of blue. Those are customers who already have water service, so therefore, having a new water main near their home does not benefit them. There is also a non-customer property that has access to water along South 51st Street, shown in yellow. So having a new water main on Minnesota Avenue does not benefit that property. So all those properties were removed, and the resulting properties are shown in red, and they are nine benefit of properties, and they're listed here. And notice that they're benefit of properties regardless if they're intent to connect. And we'll explain that later. The assessment footage, the municipal code describes how I have to compute this. Most notably, it's the linear foot of your, width of your property, and that's what it's based on. Having said that, there are some special rules for the minimum distance. If your lot was, say, 60 or 80 or 100 or 90 feet wide, the minimum assessable frontage is 100 feet. And then also, our code discusses short-side corner lots. So if you have a water main along two sides of your property, you only have to pay for the assessment along the shorter side of your property. So when you consider all that and you compute that, the total assessment footage for all the nine properties is 1,084 and 9,300ths of a foot. So to calculate the assessment, you take the total estimate, which is $208,000, and divide it by the total assessment footage, $1,084, and that computes to $192.27 per linear foot. And that exceeds the maximum rate for 2022, which is $133.82 per linear foot. That's a value that gets increased every year based on engineering news reports as far as construction index each year. So since that exceeds it, we will use $133.82. One might ask why they're so different, and the answer is because there's a lot of, if you will, dead spaces. So we talked about those properties that are not benefited, but we still have to run a pipeline pass of properties. And some of the corner properties, there's just, that's the way it works out. So the pipeline, having a pipeline in front of one's house is a mandatory assessment. And then connection, having services, that's an optional assessment. So the maximum mandatory assessment for those nine properties is $28,780, and the minimum mandatory assessment is $13,382. And so again, that's based on the maximum assessment rate of $133.82. The services, that's basically a pass-through. So whatever the contractor tells us, that's what we'll charge. So it could be high, it could be low. We don't have a maximum or minimum rate for that. Based on some other projects, we assumed $812 for a same-side service. So that's basically where someone would, our contractor would tap the water main and run it a couple feet and stop it at the right-of-way line. The assumed opposite-side service, this is where not only tap the main, but then have to cross the street and do a street patch. That's why it's more expensive. It's $4,292. And again, these will be based on the actual bid prices. So when you look at the assessment schedule, here are the nine properties. It shows the assessment footage that I assume for each property, and the assessment for the water main, which again is mandatory, and the assessment for the water service. So you can, so for example, someone may not want to connect to a water main, but they would still be assessed for the water main. But they would not have to pay for the assessment for the water service. We do allow for deferments in the municipal code in Section 207-15K. There's up to a 10-year deferment, and the deferment ends when a property gets connected or deferment ends when a property, a transfer of property occurs. Or it would end at the end of 10 years, if neither of those had happened. There is an exception on this project. For 5,000 West Minnesota, there is a special resolution where they are required to connect within 10 years. Property owners must make application to the City Clerk within 30 days of the date of the special assessment notice if they wish to defer the assessment.
Before you leave that slide?
Yes.
Deferment ends when the 10-year expires. Then what happens?
Then they would start making payments. I have a slide to show that. So annual installments, so it's not in the municipal code, but traditionally, the city has provided payment plan for the folks. So past practice is a 12-year loan at 6% interest, and the interest does not start until the deferment ends. So if they don't connect to water, that deferment would start at the end of 10 years. If, say, year five, they were to decide to connect at that time, then they could start the payment at that time. That's what we recommend, because best we can tell, that's what's always been done for these types of projects. The bill for unpaid assessment is shown on the annual property tax. So here's a chart. The minimum assessment that we talked about is $13,382. If someone were to take the payment plan, that would be $1,000, say, $1,600 a year. The maximum is, we estimate is $29,592. And if someone were to take that, the payment plan would be just over $3,500. Again, this is 6%. There's cheaper money out there. We would strongly encourage someone to go find money somewhere else, but this is an opportunity that, where the city would provide the bank. I should point out that these are not all the costs that would be included if someone were to decide to connect. So for example, someone might need, or someone would need, a private plumber or contractor to abandon a well or reconfigure a well in home plumbing, make connection to the water service shut-off at the property line that was installed by the city's contractor. All associated permits calculated by the Inspection Department. Future connection to the pipe, if they should not, if they should decide not to connect at this time, they'll have to pay a contractor in the future to make that connection. And all of these other fees are not eligible for assessment, deferments, or installments. These permit connection fees include, but are not limited to abandoning a well. And if someone were to abandon a well and be on city water, I'm sorry, if they were to, yeah, the well abandonment. If someone were to decide to keep their well, but also connect to city water, there is also a, every five years, they have to get the water tested, per DNR rules. There are plumbing inspection fees, and that's based on footage and some other things that the Inspection Department has. A new connection fee currently is $85. And a water impact fee, they would be charged currently is $2,822. Again, these are not included in the financial part, where the numbers are presented earlier. Supposed to discuss property taken or damaged. We do not anticipate any property or damage. We anticipate all the work will stay in the right-of-way that we do. Supposed to indicate a statement of benefits. That's always the question, is why am I benefited? So even if you don't connect to our water system, just the fact that there is a water pipe in front of your house gives you an increased fire protection. It does provide reliability of our supply if you do connect. Tend to be more reliable than a well system. Assurance of a water supply, which has been routinely tested for potability. When it comes from the water plant, it's a continual monitoring of the water quality. And in a matter of hours, water is taken to your house. And again, our staff tests water on a routine basis to verify that it's in compliance. Number four, elimination of the reliance on maintenance and repair of individual wells. So right now, if your well goes out, you're the one who has to maintain that. Otherwise, we think that we have a pretty reliable water system. The development of vacant, underdeveloped, or partially developed properties which are deferred from development by the lack of municipal water supply causing a negative impact on the fair market value. So not to say it can't happen, but I've never seen a situation where having water, public water, devalues a house. It's generally thought to be more valuable. So if you have an entire neighborhood where houses are higher, it helps the market value. Number six, the elimination of the potential for cross-contamination between individual limestone wells. You know, maybe their neighbor could have a septic field or could have fertilizer, whatever, could maybe contaminate their well, and it subsurface, it can actually contaminate your well also. The elimination of the use of the limestone aquifer in the vicinity of outcropping, which are more susceptible to contamination by pollution from surface contaminants, including fertilizers, pesticides, and spills. Specifically in this area, there is a quarry, right, almost right next door. So hard to say that someday, maybe some sort of crack may not happen where, you know, it could provide a direct conduit for dirty water to travel through the earth.
Glenn, on that slide in the future, it would be helpful if you had on there that we expect that there would be a reduction in your homeowner's insurance based on public fire hydrants nearby.
That would be number one, yes.
Not true, Alderman Mayor?
That is true. I won't guarantee that, but yes, it's believed to be so.
Well, it takes that 1,200 bucks and knocks it down to 800. You bet, absolutely.
So just to refresh everyone on the timeline, February 4th, you passed a resolution of preliminary intent to special assess. March 4th, I provided a notice and engineer's report that was provided to each of the property owners. Some copies were here available at City Hall and to anyone who asked. April 4th tonight is a public hearing. Summer, we expect this to be, to go to construction. Owners will be asked if they desire to connect and for a location of the service, if desired. And this fall, once we have the final numbers, we can issue a special assessment resolution with final calculations. And from that date, homeowners will have 30 days to notify the clerk if they would like a deferment. There is a new policy concerning unused water service connections. I've had several questions, and we've changed our mind in the past couple of weeks. The old policy did not allow unused taps or service leads for unused water services. That's because they were generally copper tubing, copper pipes. If you don't have water running through them, they tended to go bad over time. So we didn't want to put in a service and then have it go bad over time. Talking with-
That's the stub off the main that just sits in the right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay, so you're not putting a stub into the main? I'm getting ahead of you.
Next column. The new policy is that we will allow this. The reason why is because we've changed pipe materials. So we have a polyethylene pipe. We don't anticipate it's going to deteriorate over time. So situation is someone may say, I don't want to connect now, but I may in the future, so I would like a connection there. So in the future, I don't have to pay a contractor to dig up the road and go through a much bigger expense. So they could go through the expense now, and the city would include that in the amount that we would finance. So this is new, and it contradicts a lot of what, a lot of the answers I've answered this spring, and this is why, because we realized that we've changed pipe materials and we no longer use copper tubing, so.
But this is a benefit to the consumer.
This is a big benefit, yes, sir. Questions?
Okay. With that, we have a properly noted public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Give us your name and address, please, and let us know what you want to say.
My name is David Gudgeon, 5,000 West Minnesota. Glenn had mentioned that this is just for Minnesota Avenue from 50th Street or 51st Street to 49th. But in several areas, on the paper I received tonight, it keeps including 50th Street. Now, I was here several times on this issue, and now tonight, he's saying that the estimates do not include anything on 50th Street. Is that correct?
Notice the exhibit, you know, that's not a part of the assessment. So when I calculated the construction cost, none of that includes piping on 50th Street.
Because as description area says, from the intersection of West Minnesota Avenue and South 50th Street, a water main will extend approximately 250 feet south. That would go on 50th Street to the new subdivision, correct?
Maybe I miswrote that. 49th Street extends 50 feet.
In your description, second paragraph, middle of the paragraph, on the second paragraph, from the intersection of West Minnesota Avenue, it says going south on 50th Street?
Yes, it goes approximately 250 feet south.
Pardon?
Yes, it will go 250 feet south because I'm looping it, but none of those, none of those pipe materials-
Is that how you estimated, is this, I mean, you have a report, though, from engineers showing that on the drawing also. And that's what I'm concerned about, and that's why I've come here several times to get that removed. And I think at the last Common Council, when I was here, they specifically said, just get an estimate from 51st Street, straight east on Minnesota Avenue to 49th Street, and so many feet north on 49th Street. And that was the only thing that I thought was going to be on the report. And now I'm looking, and even in the drawings- And now I'm looking, and even in the drawings, it's showing a, you know, and you did, you did mark that it wasn't part of the assessment. So I'm not sure what's going on there. And then, on, right below the description of area, it says preliminary plans, middle of paragraph again, right after South 50th Street, plans for the entirety of this project have not been finalized, nor include the water main addition to 49th Street. A professional services agreement with an engineer has been authorized to complete the water main design, designed east to South 49th Street, and none of the plans have obtained applicable permits. So if you didn't, if the plans weren't in their entirety, how did you, I mean, did you just do this according to footage, price per foot then?
Well, I worked with the consultant who's putting this together, who's, who's actually working on the project, and we came up with an estimate just for Minnesota and 49th, not for the section on 50th Street.
Okay. So now the notes I have here is before this goes, before this is, there's going to be a resolution passing, that's correct, before, so that the other neighbors have a chance to come here. Couple of them are on vacation yet, and there's too few others that couldn't be here. Now, is this going to be a resolution? I'm not sure who can answer this one.
There will be a final resolution at the very end after the project.
Oh, after the project's done. So this, tonight is, you're just deciding that this is happening already. It's not something that's questionable anymore for the property owners involved, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Decision was made prior to when the, when the resolution to special assess.
Okay. And so the prices you came up with are, a property owner doesn't even have a, can't even answer anything to this here because he's already being assessed at 133 point, whatever it is, per foot. So this will begin then, correct?
It appears that way because there's, I would, again, these are estimates.
Okay.
So maybe we get really good prices. I can't believe they'll come down enough to make that-
Right.
Below 133.
Okay. And then one other thing on here was something that is showing 1,000 feet. Some of the preliminary costs shown in table one are final cost, and it goes on to say each parcel, and then says 1,084 feet. Is that just for the Minnesota to 49th Street and then the 50 feet over, 100?
That's the assessable frontage.
Okay. Because when I did a measurement, it was just over 750 feet from 51st Street to 49th Street.
So for frontages less than 100 feet, got increased to 100 feet.
I believe all of them are over 100 feet, aren't they, or?
No.
Okay.
There were some that were-
Okay, yeah, you could be right on that, I'm sorry. All right. Guess that's, you answered everything I had. Thank you.
Sure.
Glenn, is it true that the 50th Street, that connection is for looping purposes only?
It's true.
And therefore, it's borne by the water utility?
It's true.
Did you hear that? Okay, it's important. There's a lot of people, say a lot of strange things. That's, it's not in the calculations that were done for the assessable footage. It's not in that 1,000, whatever it was.
Right, I was just, I mean, when I looked at his assessment, and I see in, if I could find that sheet now. Item number four on his estimate project cost is eight inch tee. Is that for 50th Street?
Yes.
Okay, so that tee shouldn't have been on this report. That tee costed 800 bucks, not a lot, but it was there.
If the water main on 50th Street extended all the way, it would have to connect to it as it went by. So I felt like-
And that would incur, like the mayor said, to the water, who was it that you said was going to pay for 50th Street?
Well, eventually you will too, but it's water utility.
Eventually, yeah, it'll come out of my-
Those are, details will work out, but at 800 bucks in the scope of things, it's-
Okay. And then it showed three hydrants, so all those hydrants are going to be on Minnesota Avenue and on 49th Street, I would imagine?
Yes.
None of them on 50th Street?
Nope.
Okay, because those get a little expensive.
See that guy right next to you, on your right?
Yeah.
You going to tell him you don't want a fire hydrant there?
Oh, I'd like, I, when I called Thomasini about the cost on this stuff, he told me about 125 a foot, and I told him fire hydrants every 200 feet. So, there you go.
There you go.
It's every 300 feet, I believe, according to the city of Franklin, correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, sir, good evening. Your name and address, please.
Jim Shabowski, 8211, South 100th Street. Question for, for Glenn, nine properties involved here are being assessed, correct?
Yes.
What were the survey results from those nine different properties on whether they were interested in paying to connect, or no opinion, or against connecting to the water line?
We did not receive responses from all of them. I believe one that was being assessed was a no, at least one, maybe two.
Okay, so you, you feel the other seven people are interested in this? They were yeses, or just indifferent enough?
Let me go through them.
I did not see the results up here.
5,000 was a yes by default, because that's per prior resolution. 5,300 was a yes. 4,851 was a no, later called me with a yes. The next one was a yes. The one on the, would be the east corner, I'm sorry, the west corner of 49th and Minnesota was, did not respond. Brother told me it was a yes, but he did not respond. And then there was a no response in the middle, and I believe the one on the, I don't remember the one on the corner.
So a, a majority of yeses, right?
Correct.
Would you say that the survey results was a driver in having, going forward with this project then?
Perhaps, but as I've told everyone, survey is not a, a vote per se, it just gives a common council an indication whether it's needed or not, or whether it's wanted or not, and they make that along with a host of other reasons as to when they decide to do a project.
What was the driver behind this project?
Request, there is a new subdivision to the south, and then had some conversations with folks that said, we'd like to connect to it, so that was what prompted it.
Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Alderman will.
I had a couple of questions here that came from residents, and one of them was, what was the driver on this? So, because a lot of people thought that the development was the driver. There actually were two residents that did request that, and there was a motion to finish that section in 2019, but that didn't happen. So Glenn, if, if this is mainly being done for that loop that you want, and the people to the right of 50th Street up there in the red, you know, we got one guy who was going to get well, we got a couple no's, we got, one's a bank owned, one's a rental. Wouldn't the section that goes, heads back to Minnesota be part of that required loop? Are you including the section from 50th back to Minnesota for that loop in these people's assessment?
Okay, so a couple of things. If, if that's all we were doing, we would still be assessing at least three properties.
Will you be assessing the, the guy with the well on 5003?
Recall the original project was just to go this way.
Right.
We would assess, and conversation was, we should sit this way, this possible need over there, so that's why I brought project to you this year.
Right.
If you recall, in the, we had a meeting where project got expanded, was asked to survey additional properties in the neighborhood, and I came back with those additional surveys and that.
Why would you assess the guy on 50th on the long side instead of leaving them without water until the water went down Minnesota?
This one?
No, the next, that one, right. Because the one next to it on the opposite side of 50th-
They're being assessed on the-
They're being assessed on the short side because you're putting the loop going east. But if, what my question is, if you were not putting the loop going east, and you stopped it at that intersection and went back, that would be the loop needed for the subdivision.
So if, if it was only head north on 50th Street and west on Minnesota, you are correct, we would assess that property on the long side, because they, they would not have a water main on both sides of the property.
Okay, and you wouldn't wait till they had the short side, you would just assess them on the long side?
That would be how the code directs me to do it.
So then if we had done that, which was the original 2019 motion, would they have been assessed for the Minnesota section from 50th west to Minnesota?
If we had done a project earlier that just went up 50th and went west on Minnesota, did the project and were done with it, then a new project came along where we picked it up and went continued east, no, they would not have been assessed because they, they would not be benefit of property, because they already had water on 50th.
Right, I guess I'm make, I'm trying to make the case that from Minnesota to 50th Street is already going in as part of the 50th Street loop for the subdivision, and I don't think that that linear, linear footage should be charged to the residents to the west, or to the east.
There was a discussion when the subdivision went in, should we make the subdivision provide that water? And the decision was made not to.
I don't know, I wasn't part of that decision, but. So the rest of the questions that I have are, so all of them received the notice as far as you see, including the bank owned one and the rental. Do you see any issues with those? If they don't get back with you, can you still proceed?
If they don't get back with me?
Right, the bank, you know, does the bank have to get back with you because they're going to be assessed, the bank owned property? Is that going to hold anything up?
I believe they get assessed like anyone else.
Okay.
We sent the letters out and the public notice, that's why we do a public notice.
Okay. And then for the bid, did the bid go out yet for this?
No, we have to do more designs, so they're working on the survey.
Okay. And then is the last time this amount was done, do you know what the approximate costs were? Were at 133 or something per linear foot? Do you remember the last?
It's been a while ago, but I'm sure it was significantly less. I don't know the number.
Could you find that out? Because that was one of the constituent questions that were asked, so if you could get that.
I can't tell you, it's been 2016 maybe, where we, we discussed the fact that our assessment rates were way too low to keep up with market. So we did a thorough analysis of what a, a project would-
I want to know the answer. It's, you don't have to, I understand what we did and the details on it, so, let's see if I, so the other question I has, had when you had the optional area, it says, the question was, can they pay the water impact fee hookup upfront at today's, today's cost, even if they don't hook up? Because it was that optional, and in the future-
So, so the, the actual connection, as the last slide stated, we've changed our policy, we will allow that because we're using different, different materials.
That's not-
As far as the water, but as far as the water connection fee, I, I don't know that that's allowed or not, I would probably defer to legal counsel on that.
Well, the question was, is can you prepay impact fees?
We defer to legal counsel on that.
Mr. City Attorney?
I was surprised when I saw impact fees involved.
That's not correct. We'll have to get an answer on that second question, but impact fees are for new to the water system. That's been the definition in Franklin. But yeah, because that question came up on a different area of the community.
But I don't know if that can be prepaid.
I don't know why you'd want to, but, okay.
I think I'm, this is really good for the rest of you that are going to have water issues coming up, and so I'm glad we're taking the time to go through this, because it has been a while since we did this. So-
Well, Alderman?
Yeah.
This is a public hearing, and we concluded the public hearing.
Right.
And I, I offered you the opportunity for a few comments. We-
Should I not address my constituents' concerns and questions?
Well, that's what the public hearing is for, and that's what all of the, the time with the city engineer has been dedicated for. We've gone, gone over this many, many times, the similar questions. So make it quick. I mean, we spend more time on these.
I would prefer, instead of, I'm here to do my job, and making it quick is not my job. My job is to get the constituents their answers and make the best vote I can based on the information. And I have one more question, and then I think I've, he's addressed all my questions. So now that I've lost my train of thought, let me look back at my notes. I thought you did a really good job laying out the process, because that's always been up in the air. What I didn't know was that preliminary resolution, and this was not said to us, that the preliminary resolution pretty much kicked in that this is, that they don't really have much of a say-so after we did that preliminary resolution. So that needs to be made clear on any future projects. So when I went through the 207 chapter of the process, I got us all the way down, and you took us all the way through that with your steps, down to the point where we're on 207J, resolution levelling assessments. And it says, after the hearing, persons interested in the proposed assessment, the city council may approve, disapprove, or modify the proposed assessments, or it may refer the report to the engineer with such direction, direction as it deems necessary to accomplish a fair and equitable assessment. So I think the questions about those need to be answered for that, and so I would like to refer that part for those answers. Upon approval of the engineer's report, which was, this is only a preliminary engineer's report, it's my understanding that the, the engineering report will be finalized after the project's done and all the costs are there. And then that engineer, upon approval of the engineering's report, the city council shall adopt a resolution, levying the special assessment. So there is the other resolution, somebody asked me, well, there's already a resolution in the packet? I'm like, no, that resolution has nothing to do with it, that was that gentleman's resolution. And so that was confusing to people. And I know you did it, you know, so everybody could understand that he didn't, he hadn't a deferment, but they don't know the difference between resolutions, so that is something for a future spellout. So then the resolution shall contain a confirmation of the engineering's report, and then the publication of the resolution shall be published by the clerk in a class one notice, and then the resolution shall be mailed to every interested person. And then at that point, we have the other hearing, and that is when they would have to basically get into an appeal. So any person against whose land is levied in the section may appeal. So I'm hoping that's clear for the people that couldn't be here and the people that had questions. That was straight out of there, so. I, I kind of think that we should have just done the original motion in 2019 and took care of the, the one issue, and we would have probably saved some money. The problem I have with what we're doing now is we're still leaving an open-ended loop. So when we take it down to the corner of Minnesota and 49th and then stub it, that's another unlooped section. And so if this was all being driven by a loop, we're now creating another unlooped section. So do you foresee that you're going to force another? So do you foresee that you're going to force another section to Rossin Avenue down 49th then take care of that loop? Or?
If it's the council's desire to, I, I, I mean, I'd like to put water mains there where I think just get over with and done with would be nice, but that's, that's not realistic. So we, we inch it forward as, for various reasons, whether people want it or in case that he was referenced, you know, we're putting a water tower up or another need for a, you know, we, we typically don't put water mains where there's not a reason to put them there. So.
Okay.
Alderman Mayor.
Whenever we, I hear police powers, it causes me to really focus on something. I don't like to hear that. And we come up with this time and time again with the water main issues. One of the things that we hang our hats on is we tell the homeowners and the residents that once they get water through, it's going to increase their assessment and they'll be able to sell their property for more. I'm not expecting a quick answer on this one unless it's probably going to be no because it's too complicated. But I would like to plant the seed here that we start thinking about this. Why can't we treat this like a TIF district and incrementally raise the assessment? If we're, if we're going to hang our hat on that assessment is going to be more at the end of this, they're going to get more money for their homes. Why can't we incrementally use the increment, take the assessment, take the income ta, uh, the property taxes and pay it down on the water mains so that in 20 years or whatever, like a TIF district, the water mains paid for and they're, they're on their own with the, with the home rather than slamming them with $10,000 or $30,000 or whatever it might be at one big fell swoop? And I know we give them low interest loans and all of that, but why not just make it realistic so they know by the end of the rainbow, they're actually going to have that value in the property? Is there any way we could do that? I know we can't do that now. I know.
I guess I would.
It would be very complicated.
I guess I'd say I'm not an expert in state statutes, but the parts that I've read concerning this, I don't recall that as an option. So let's see, so the attorney knows of a way where that's been done. I've never heard of that.
Property value is what the property value is and you don't tweak with it for property taxation.
Yeah. And I get that. But once the water main is in, you can't tell me that the first year that it's in, they're going to be paying $10,000 or whatever we're charging more in taxes. Why can't we just take that X amount that they would be paying more and put it toward this? Just like a TIF district, we, we, they still pay their regular taxes, but whatever it's assessed above that because they now have water, let's take that and pay for the water system.
Same answer in a little bit different part of the realm. Governing bodies, governmental entities are allowed to do that type of distribution in a tax incremental district only. You can't kind of do the payback scenario outside of a TIF district or costs invested.
But if laws were changed or if the city set an ordinance, is it a possibility somewhere?
It would require a statutory and perhaps a constitutional change.
I'd suggest we're kind of there, but we don't do a good job at it. Part of the presentation should be an estimate of increased value, but you got to look at where we're at in the society these days. Any number you put out there is going to get argued with. And what gives us the authority and the expertise to put an additional value of a pipe going past your house? So it's, that's if we, if we choose to go down a path similar to what you're suggesting.
Okay. I, I know it wasn't going to be an easy answer. I'm just trying to plant the seed, think about it in the future. This is my last chance to bring it up and throw it out there. So please think about it there. I, I'm sure there's got to be a way, a creative way that it could work.
Okay. No action to be taken on this item. That concludes that public hearing. We move on to item E, mayoral appointments. Erin Kaplic to Economic Development, he's District Four, and Diane Donahue to replace her husband on the Fire and Police Commission.
Motion to confirm mayoral appointments.
Barbara and Hanneman. Madam Clerk? Well, let me do this. I've got a motion, but is there a request for separate action? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Hope for.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries six ayes, no nos, no absents, no abstentions. We move on to the regular order of business. Item G1, page 41 in your packet. This is a resolution for conditions and restrictions for special use for a wonderfully new 271,753,000 square foot spec building on Oakwood Road. Who's doing this? Ms. Brady?
The applicant is HSA Commercial Real Estate. They're requesting approval for two special uses. One for being able to operate the building, either all of it or part of it for e-commerce, warehousing, distribution, and also to allow for overnight truck parking on the southern row of spaces along the southern part of the property line. The, the site plan is incorporated in your packet of materials. The Plan Commission recommended approval at their meeting on March 17th and the, but the proposed conditions of approval in the attached draft resolution available for questions. And I believe the applicants are also here if you have questions for them.
Alderman Willough. I'm moved by Hanneman, seconded by Hope for.
I'm not sure who can address this question, so I'll just say it and then, on page 47, it says, this proposal is the same as proposed for the Aspen Way location, which was south of the site. And due to various difficulties getting the development work going on that property, the applicant moved the development to this site. I was really okay with the trucking being on the southern property. I'm a little less okay with this type of 78 trucking parking spot being, for one, really close to the residential homes and the other being right next to the hospital. So could you address what were the various difficulties and why it couldn't go where it was? And if the residents were notified that this was a change of the special use location?
Well, I can address whether or not the, the special use application requires public notice within 500 feet of the property line. The property line that was used for public notice was actually the larger site because at the time we did not have a, I believe we actually had a legal description for, a recorded legal description for lot one of the CSM that created this property. So it would have gone out 500 feet from that distance and probably would have included the southern end of the residential development down the street and potentially would have included somebody over there. The location of the trucks is adjacent to the conservancy area, the outlot. None of the parking spaces will be visible from Oakwood Road. They'll all be right behind the building. So they'll see the building before they ever see any of the trucks parked behind it. The landscaping is designed so that any kind of view from future Hickory Street will be addressed and ameliorated by the design of the landscaping itself. And the area to the east is of course the future Seputo Cheese where you're going to have a lot of trucks coming in and going out of that property as well. So also the, the future Hickory Street is the design for the truck access point. So everything will be coming in off of Hickory Street and then going out on Oakwood going east. So the trucks won't be going west anywhere from this property. It'll all be going east over toward 27th Street and then down over toward Elm Road toward the access to I-94. So everything that would have been potentially a negative impact in terms of either aesthetics or, or view sheds or anything like that has been addressed by the applicant, certainly to the satisfaction of Plan Commission staff, believed that it was a suitable design for proposed site. In terms of the other site, that had to do more with, not so much problems with HSA as with problems with the developer of that site.
The landowner failed to complete the sale of the property, failed to complete the developer's agreement with the city, and the city terminated all agreements with him. Must be nine months ago by now.
Something like that.
And let the record reflect, Alderman Mayor left his seat at 7:31.
Okay. The answer is, so, my question. Thank you.
Alderman Hanneman. No, do not say that. On the motion, all those with Alderman Mayor not here, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five ayes, no nos, one absent, no abstentions. G2, page, thanks guys. G2, page 73 is amendment for the intergovernment agreement between Milwaukee County and the City of Franklin for EMS funds distribution. Your motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G3 is approval of an agreement with QRS Corp. to build out an office in the inspections Department.
Second.
Barbara and Nelson, Mr. City Attorney.
Suggestion is that in addition to the motion on the common council action sheet that in addition there to it have with any changes approved by the fire chief, director of administration and the city attorney, including the inclusion of the city standard services agreement form.
Is that part of your motion?
Amendment.
Alderman Nelson?
Second.
Okay. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five ayes, no nos, one absent, no abstentions. G4, page 87, municipal judge recommends enhancement, $1,321 in bond amount when the DA sends us something back to us. Okay. Nelson, Hanneman, Wilhelm.
I guess, my question, just for clarification, so for example, and maybe Mr. City Attorney can shed light on this, muni judge is not here. So something is sent down as state DC disorderly conduct. DA reviews it, says, no, doesn't reach the level of a crime, keep it muni. Does this amount get added to the current DC citation? That was my.
No, this is the bond amount. So that's what it is.
So it's no relation with, with an actual forfeiture that's going to be? I thought that was added on because somebody's penalties are simply adding things on when they get kicked back from.
Well, that's my understanding as to the fine. I don't do the municipal court. This was primarily prepared by one of the prosecuting assistant city attorneys. But my understanding is that that would be the bond amount, so it could likely be the forfeiture amount also. And not with it being added to anything. And I was informed that in addition to the letters from the municipal judge, that the police department, as well as the municipal clerk's office and the assistant city attorneys who do the prosecuting services are all recommending approval of both motions.
No, I, I understand that part. I was just wondering about the fine amount, like a DC citation's 376. I wonder if that was getting added to or would it going to be the final bond amount? Or does it stay 376? I guess that's, but I understand they're all for it, so I support it. I just want a little clarification.
Hold it.
No, no, no. I'm good with it. I'll make the motion approve.
Is there a second? Then Alderman Hanneman? Seconded by Alderman Barber, Alderman Hanneman, and then Alderman Wilhelm.
Yeah. I'd just like to bring up a couple of points on page 90. And generally I, I'm fine with all of this except I'd like to make the point that two items there possesses and uses tobacco product on school grounds and the last one, use of tobacco products under age 18. I think those bonds are painfully low considering all of the work that our health department and Volition Franklin are doing to dissuade the use of tobacco products under the age of 18. And I would like to see those two items come back to us with a proposed higher bond.
All right. I'll send the judge an email and Alderman Barber can talk to him at the next Volition meeting. Is it okay?
Thanks.
Alderman Wilhelm.
The city attorney addressed my question. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was for both motions. Okay. G5, page 93, approval of one-year WENS service agreement for Inspireon Logistics System's continuation of our reverse 911 system.
Second.
Barber and Hope for. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five ayes, no nos, one absent, no abstentions. What, what was your vote on that matter?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nos, no absent, no abstentions. G6, page 105, resolution to accept public recreational trail easements in Riot Meadows subdivision.
Second.
Hanneman and Barber. Alderman Nelson. Which one?
One of the things I'd like to see is under the recommendation is, I guess there's a problem with where this trailhead is actually going to go at the very end when it's all said and done because we really don't know where the connectivity part. So would it be acceptable if the recommendation is basically everything goes through and this is Riot Meadows subdivision and then just we're, we're accepting the easement at this point, but we're not going to move forward with the trail construction?
Does your question relate to the trailhead? This is on the other side of the street. Mr. City Engineer?
We, I say we, we authorized Grave to proceed with the design of a trail along this general route. And so we had some, some owners that we thought we could, we could poke the trail through to 112th Street. Those negotiations kind of fell apart after we got the appraisals. And so this is an alternate route to 112th Street. So it, it's, we would continue the design and complete the trail. We would go out for, for bidding the project as we were directed last year.
Alderman Wilhelm.
Well, this isn't a trail that's extremely important in the scheme of things as far as where it's going to connect because it's going to get to 112th Street, then there's no connection from that point, right? There's no sidewalk on 112. There's no future 12 from 112. So it's just kind of dead ends at that point, right?
Well, it would, it would empty out on 112th Street. So 112th Street isn't, isn't that busy right now and it could be used for pedestrians and bicycles.
I guess in referencing Alderman Nelson's comment, it seems to make sense that since we have other projects in his district, I think what he's getting at is the possibility of some matching funds if we don't put a trail in that goes to nowhere when we might have other projects that could be a higher priority. And especially given we don't know what park or if park property will happen, maybe we should have a bigger cohesive picture before we guarantee the completion of this trail and authorize it for construction for bid. But, I mean, there are so many other projects in the city that actually complete loops or connect, make connections to things. I, I think this is one of the. I think this is one of these situations, you do sort of like you did with Pleasant Few Park. You get the property, which is in this case is the easement, and then you complete the trail when you have all the other linkage points to that. There's a pretty good wetland impact on this. So, it's, this might not be as cheap as we think, and there's going to be some permitting involved.
Agreed.
I think we're jumping ahead of this a little bit before we have a big picture, and I would ask that we do what Alderman Nelson suggested with just accept the easement at this time. We can always come back and finish and authorize the trail and bid the trail.
Keep in mind, there is 71% park impact fees that would be involved here, too. 62, excuse me.
Yes, I understand that, but what we're doing is we're tying up matching park impact fees for a project that's not really necessary and is not really going to serve a population. So, we're giving up funds that we could use for something that we may desire more beneficial to the community, and I think that's what we're looking at. We have to be smart about this. Just don't put it in just because it has a larger matching fund. I mean, that's, that just, you know, I get that we just want to eat up fees because they're burned out, but I guess...
Let's be absolutely crystal clear. This will serve 73 new homeowners.
To nowhere.
It will serve them from one street to another street through their backyards. In addition to that, you guys complain all of the time about doing construction and going past people's houses. You put this in now before the houses are in there. I know what you're trying to do. Let's be smart about this.
I believe that I did have the floor, which was taken from me, and I think that you as the chairman have plenty of time to talk when you disagree with me, so there's really, you can let me say my piece, and then you can disagree rather than cutting me off or taking the floor from me. But I don't know if there's what I'm trying to do. What I'm trying to do is look at projects in a whole, in general, and this easement is not going to affect the property, and it's not going to be in their backyards. I mean, you want to say you're going to put it in early, but it's not close to people's backyards. There's a buffer between there. There's a piece of property between there. So, it's not like you're going to have a bunch of people up and down about this. I don't know. It's the Alderman's district, and he needs to decide by listening to some of his residents as well, what's the best use of the parks in the area. So...
I believe there's a second, correct?
Yep. Okay. On the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilhelm.
No.
Alderman Mayor.
Aye.
Alderman Hopefer.
Aye.
Motion carries, five ayes, one no, no absent, no abstentions. Move on to G7, page 119, ordinance to two men, 92-1, to account for final grade certification as a condition of issues with any final occupancy permit. Alderman Hopefer.
This is a project that I've looked at quite a bit, considering the last subdivision that we approved that had some drainage issues and concerns. Being a 40-year resident of the city, I know that we've had numerous drainage issues in the past. With my construction experience, I know firsthand that the developer is required to certify the grades of all of the lots to ensure proper drainage, but when a homeowner gets involved or a home builder gets involved, there's not been a requirement to make sure that the final grades are actually certified to be what they should be. Sometimes a landscaper comes in and puts berms and adds more fill or not enough fill where it needs to be. I know that other communities have ordinances in place that require verification of final grade to ensure that drainage is there. So, I talked to our engineering department and asked them what they thought of it. They were in favor of the idea, and we both did our independent research on what other communities have done, what costs are. I had an opportunity to talk to a few developers as well. They're fine with the idea, and I guess Glenn, I would have you explain what you came up with.
Mr. City Engineer.
So, in a nutshell, it basically means that within 12 months after a home receives occupancy, they have to have a licensed land surveyor actually go out and certify that the grades that are there are the grades that were anticipated when my department reviewed and approved their plans. As Alderman says, typically what happens is the home builder will go in, he'll build a home, then leaves, and a home buyer will come in, they'll hire a landscaper, and the landscaper will put mounds and drainage easements and causes drainage to go different directions and so forth, and it's caused, we have a handful of issues every year where this comes up where, you know, it turns out somebody five years ago didn't comply with our, with our plans, and this is really all we're asking them to do is when the landscaping is done, when they turf everything, when they landscape it, they need to prove that it's in compliance with the plan that we approved.
And I would just add that it was done with no extra burden on city staff or no cost to the city.
Correct.
Oh, I didn't realize I hit my button, but since I did, yeah, this comes up time and time again. Once a neighborhood is in, neighbors have issues between neighbors, and it's because exactly of this type of thing. Everything is approved at the start, but then once landscapers come in and do what they do and drainage changes, and it turns into a mess. So, it's a very good thing.
So, we got Hanneman and then Wilhelm. You were...
Thank you. Alderman Hopefer, thank you. Mr. City Engineer, thank you, and your staff. City Engineer and Assistant City Engineer were just out in a subdivision with me last week on this very issue, and so I'm very happy to see this brought forward and fully support.
Alderman Wilhelm.
I agree, fully in support of it. I would ask that can we also include the verification of silt fencing removal? Stuff is buried all over the city, and what they do is they just dose it in, and then when you try to plant plants, you're dealing with pulling up that black fencing, and it's very difficult. Well, hopefully if we add this verification of removal, then we don't have that burden issue.
We don't get it in properly half the time.
And there's one I need to talk about.
The one issue I have, Glenn, is so they don't submit the as-built, who's going to check up on that after a year?
If they don't submit it, then we issue a fine.
Which in essence is the bond, the 500 bucks.
Yeah, so they would forfeit their deposit or their bond, and then they would still receive a citation for not complying.
Okay. Are, do you intend to have staff go out and verify?
We will know because we will see, inspection department will know when occupancy was granted, and now with our new system, we'll set a timer, a tickler in place, so 11 months later, we'll start looking for it, and if we don't see it within that month, then we know that they have expired.
So, to Alderman Wilhelm's issue, are we going to have some sign-off on silt removal, silt fence removal on perhaps?
If I understand the direction, so a surveyor would not only certify that the grades are met, but that the silt funds has been removed.
Yeah.
Good.
Alderman Hopefer.
Will there be any notification at 11 months back to the owner, just as a reminder, because that's one of those small details?
I think, I think we can set our systems up to automatically send out a letter.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion. Do you have a motion? Alderman Hopefer, in motion. Hopefer and Hanneman, as amended, as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G8 is a resolution to award the street improvement program for 2022. Barbara and Nelson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and again, I compliment the council on that, not making it political. Thank you very much. G9, on page 129, is a resolution to award the street preventive maintenance program contract. This is an amount of $89,389.35 to Scott Construction. Barber and Mayor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries back on G8. The local road improvement program was awarded to Stark Pavement in the amount of $891,491.5 G10 is the annual Bit Defender Gravity Zone Ultra software maintenance at $11,301. Moved and approved, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G11, 135, is one that gripes my cookies. Authorization to relocate a light pole in the amount of $12,172 unbudgeted dollars. Alderman Mayor.
Are we paying for this when county is redoing the bridge, and why aren't they paying for it with the project? We've already got the light pole there.
The answer is, it's the way it's always been done.
Well, it's wrong.
Well, the options we have here is to, well, I agree with you 100%. This is a load. This is just ridiculous. My suggestion is either table it with instructions to staff to tell the county we're not going to pay it, and then staff can come back and say they're going to make us pay it anyway, or decline it, and then they'll rip it out and probably not put it back in. Which I don't...
Well, I'm going to vote no, so you table it, I won't be here to say no next time, so I got to say no this time.
Well, we need a motion first, but this is one of those things where, you know, we make the rules and we're bigger than you, so, you know, we don't need to tell you.
And is this standard for every municipality where they do something like this?
Yes, so we're, it's county right of way, and this is actually a state project. State project, county's helping them with it, but our sidewalks are in their right of way, our light poles are in their right of way. We put them there, we're expected to maintain them and move them, and...
Well, the state's more reasonable than the county. Can we work with them?
Well, here's the operative word, we're expected to maintain them. This isn't a maintenance. This is, we're going to move it. Okay, go ahead. We give you our permission.
Uh huh.
Move it. But no, they say, no, you're paying for it, but we want it moved. Well, you guys pay for it. We pay double the taxation because of that. Hopefer and then Hanneman.
Mr. City Engineer, do we know when this project could start and how long it's going to last when they do the bridge?
I do, but I don't have it here tonight.
Well, roughly, I'm assuming it's in the summer.
Yes, I believe it's, this needs to be done this year, I believe this is when the construction project occurs.
So, when the rock is busy and everything else is humming, does the city have a mechanism to help notify residents and any detours or things like that?
Sure. So, in the planning stages, we've been working on planning stages, probably about a year now, and so we've given them the contact people at the rock to coordinate their schedules, and there will be some lane restrictions, but it won't, they won't be blocked completely. There are some wide load detours, and we've been talking to them how to reroute those trucks and not through city streets, so, thank you.
So, the current light pole, any estimate on how old it is? What's its lifespan, and will we be replacing it with a newer, better model?
So, yeah, I don't know how old this is. I can, I would have to assume that the city installed it whenever that was, but it will be the newer pole style. So, if you go out there, there's, went out and looked at it right before the meeting, there's some, it's really an old-style pole, and all the rest of them have been replaced. We replaced those last year, it's just, this is the last one. It's a lot more involved.
So, it basically needs to be replaced at some point anyway?
It does.
Okay.
Alderman Hanneman.
So, fire me.
You're fired. So, I mean, generally, it sounds like we're going to have to hold our nose and close our eyes and swallow hard on that $12,172.68, but Alderman Hopefer really kind of called out the bigger issue here is, and I'm a little sensitive to the fact on road construction issues not being properly communicated to residents, because I've had some issues with the Waukesha Water Project in my district. Regardless of whose responsibility it is to communicate this, I think it behooves us as a city to alert in some way, shape, or form the residents that this is going to be happening, and the general timeframe, what it's going to mean. More information is always better than less information, especially in instances like this. So, is our next city newsletter going out prior to this? Maybe a little blurb, you know?
Yeah, we could do that.
Just watch out for construction. This is what's happening this summer.
But we can also, I can also ask them to put out some reader boards while I'm telling them to take their light pole.
Yeah.
You know, that'll work, right? Do this for me, but...
Yeah, but they got to update the reader boards, too, because that's been an issue.
Who was next? I've got Wilhelm and Mayor.
I'm done.
Okay, good. Anybody else?
And the reader board is my point, some kind of readout, because regardless of what we put out, I mean, there's people that'll, that travel there every day that don't live in Franklin, don't get the city newsletter, don't go to the website, whatever, but the reader boards, some kind of boards up sooner than later that this is coming, I think, is a very good idea for all the people that actually do travel on there.
Remember, this is the same organization that closed all of the median cuts on Rossin and 76th Street without telling us.
Same one that's going to take our light pole and make us pay for it.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, is there a motion regarding this matter? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're all babies. Any opposed?
No.
All right, Dan. Keep it up with the way to go. All right, Madam Clerk, please.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor.
No.
Alderman Hopefer.
Aye.
So, I guess I don't have to tell them that they can not do the light pole, but give us the reader board, now I don't get to do, ask them for something. Okay. Motion carries, five ayes, one no, no absent. G12 is a nice one. Termination of TID 3. Moved by Alderman Hanneman and seconded by Alderman Mayor, Alderman Wilhelm.
TID district in my area for quite some time, so I'm glad to see it's closed. I do have a question about, we want to advance the final determination to preserve this for the year, but there are a few known items that will not be settled until next year. How much? What are they?
So, the big one is we have a debt payment that is due. We have one due in September, we have another one due in March, so those are known. It's $401,700 in total. I think it was $5,850 September 1st, the remainder on March 1st of the following year. We also believe we'll be getting computer aid for this TID from the state this July that will also be factored in, and we're looking for a confirmation from the Department of Transportation that there are no more project costs, which we do not believe there are, but we just want to make sure. So, those are the outstanding issues.
Those are the only ones, so, okay.
Correct. Okay. And then there was a property chargeback, um, that's getting recorded in 2022 on either Sam's or Walmart, whichever one was in the TID, one was in, one was out, and it's the one in the TID, so we just have to make sure we get that recorded. And we did talk to our auditors, and they are okay with us escrowing that money and withholding it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have an estimate, Madam Director of Administration, of the net benefit to the taxpayers?
I don't have it broken down by share, right, I don't have it broken down by share, we expect it to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.1 million of remainder funds that would be shared based on the taxing authorities' proration, prorata shares over the most recent year.
So that's the cash out amount?
Correct.
What about the tax benefit in terms of, uh, test value?
So the increment is 85 million, that's an equalized basis, so it's going to be a slight adjustment for assessed. On the tax roll, we'll get 50% of that as growth, the other 50% basically reduces the taxes, that's a state, um, formula that is in play.
All in all, a good thing. Okay, we have a motion. Who made the motion? Okay, uh, roll call on this, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Holtfer.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, no nos, no absence, no abstentions, this is a good thing for the taxpayers of the city of Franklin. Uh, G13 on page 139, confirmation of John Regitz as the Economic Development Director. I will tell you, end of May, for those of you who are going to ask the next question. All those in favor, signify by, uh, roll call. Alderman Mayor.
Um, I see he's not here tonight, we'll, he'll be here for a, an introduction at some point when he can introduce himself to the city. We've, we know that staff has met him and put him through a grueling process, and we met with him and put him through a grueling process, so we, uh, all are probably comfortable doing this, but it'd be nice if he could address the citizens at some point.
He'll be here right in front of us, you will. But yes, we'll do that, and we'll.
Can he stay with you in the meantime?
Well, he can if he wants, but he's got to push me out of the way. You know how that goes. Uh, we, we will invite you as well. Madam Clerk would like a roll call.
Because it's in.
Okay, there you go.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, no nos, no absence, no abstentions. G14, page 143, is approval of professional services recruitment for Director of Finance and Treasurer. Barbara and Hanneman, questions? Alderman Mayor.
Is this the same?
Hold on, hold on.
Is this the same procedure we followed last time?
We did not use a recruitment firm the first time, and, and the recruitment, as well as the market, is very, very tight right now, which is why we're recommending to use recruitment. And recruitment services mean that plural, we're not tied to a, um, individual contract with any one recruiter. We're looking right now for the best candidate, and we're trying to cast our net as wide as we can to do that.
Okay, are we going nationwide?
I'm going to say yes, but probably this isn't a nationwide type of position, um, we are trying to get at least Midwest.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a motion.
I think we're done.
Did we?
Took a roll call.
Let's try this again, is there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong, I'm thinking of the election.
For those of you watching at home, it's an election eve pre-evening, and the clerk has got other things on her head.
This is the first time in nine years that I've witnessed such a thing.
Um, the, uh, there is no vote.
Is there a motion, is there a motion?
Yes, Alderman Barber seconded by Alderwoman Hanneman.
There we go. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G15, page 145, is a request authorized carryforward of unused 2021 appropriations for use in 2022. The amount is $4,473,070. Alderman Wilhelm.
Are all of these items, um, like, sent out to bid, or are we, are?
They're not items that have been sent out to bid, with the exception of the Fire Department one, because you just talked about the buildout of the Inspection Office for the new Fire Inspector, that one's out to bid. Um, the Elections Department printing, we're waiting on that one. Other ones, um, the Tennis Courts have, nothing has been done on that one. Pleasant View, you know this is just the paperwork catching up to the bid, we talked about that at the first meeting in March. Church Street Pathway has, what was approved tonight? Pleasant View Park? Oh, Church Street. Um, and then nothing yet on the park signage, and the water tower is finishing up design.
Okay, and that's why, um, it's been delayed, is because of the design?
Correct, there, for the water tower, there was, um, a pretty lengthy PSC process as well, and I think that started last spring, and it went through last November. So now they're wrapping.
I didn't, I wasn't aware it went through the Public Service Commission.
Right, so anytime you add.
I know, that's.
Infrastructure, yeah.
But I didn't know that it had gone to that, because we hadn't gotten an update to the council for quite a while, so, okay.
A motion, yes, I do. Uh, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Holtfer.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, no nos, no absence, no abstentions. G16, page 147, ordinance to amend 2021 2486, an ordinance adopting the 2022, 2022 annual budgets for the General Fund, capital outlight, capital improvement, Development Fund, water utility, utility development fund, to provide the carryforward appropriations from 2021 to 2022 identified on the Council Action Sheet, $5,948,485. Second, you got to be quicker now. Alderman Wilhelm.
Same question, which ones have current approvals and bidding, and, and then as far as eight, nine, what are all the city improvements and city maintenance projects?
So the answer to the first question is partially what I just told you, because that 4.4 million is included in this. This is the formal budget amendment for both the ones that you just approved under G15, as well as the ones that you approved on December 21st. Website redevelopment has not been started. Ken Wendell Pavilion repairs are being build, bid out right now, it'll publish tomorrow. Inspected expenses, limited help, that is an ongoing one, one-time money as it is used for emergency services, it does not get replaced. Merritt Pool will not be used until we have a Merritt Pay Plan. Security improvements, as soon as we have resources available, we're going to be bidding that out. The needs at the Police Department are mostly video capabilities throughout Police Department, and City Hall is a combination of, um, door securities, cameras, um, hopefully doing something with our entrance, hallway safety, security glass, emergency plan, et cetera. Um, that, it's been on the list, we just need to get it done. Senior Travel Program, you know about that one, that one was approved in, I believe, the first meeting in December. IT security testing, that was approved at the last meeting, we're in the process of doing that penetration testing. As far as eight and nine specifically, those are, um, in May of 2020, there was a study done through IRS, industrial roofing, um, and they identified a number of projects. I presented that report to you last September, as well as an agreement with IRS. That's part of the bid that's going on right now, those specific dollars are for the, um, hardscape, roofing, and building envelope items, um, exteriors, building exteriors. We plan to do, that's the one from last fall, late last fall, we plan to do another one yet in 2022, and the list of needs on city facilities is very, very large, so, um, the plan is, these were the ones that were in last year's budget, and the plan would be to do, um, another 350,000 each year, trying to hit our highest priority items. Keep in mind, there's going to be things, when it says city facilities, think of that collectively. We have a parking lot at the Police Department, that's 300-plus thousand, we have another one at the library, so there are a lot of needs coming forward with city facilities. Yeah, we could, yeah, we could keep going on needs, because there are a lot of priorities. City Hall landscaping and the furniture and fixtures, those are just smaller 2021 budget carryovers.
Okay, um, just, um, remembering that we have a requirement to have all bids approved by the council before they go out, so I'm, I'm guessing that those all.
So the one that's being bid out right now, that was approved by the council at the first meeting in October, that was the IRS one.
Ken Wendell.
Ken Wendell's part of that, correct? It's, um, the estimate is, for all three sections, I want to say 328,000.
Right.
Did somebody make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, no nos, no absence, no abstentions. G17 on page 153, is an ordinance to amend 2021 2486, adopting the 2022 annual budgets, General Fund, Development, TID 8, Capital Outlight, Equipment Replacement, uh, Capital Improvement, TID 4, Sanitary Sewer and Water Fund, uh, for the fiscal year 2022, to approve budget encumbrances that we just did.
Nope, these are separate.
These are separate.
So the difference between the ones we just did, the carryforwards that we just did, those are the ones where mostly the projects haven't started, and those are kind of, those are fund balance reservations. This one are the one, this one is the one where we have contracts in place, something's in progress. The PO has been established on pages 156 and 157, you'll see the list of POs, and those are then boiled down into the ordinance amendment by fund.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Barbara and Hanneman. Madam Clerk.
What was the, um, I have a question.
Alderman Wilhelm.
Peggy, what was the, um, sorry, this, maybe this is going, the sanitary sewer for two and a half million?
That's the lift station down in, um, south of the New Hickory.
Okay, that's almost the whole cost of it, right, so that.
Um, I think the bid was 2.3, and then I think, yeah. But the cost, what was the total cost? I think the contract was 2.3.
Sounds right.
I think we were up to 2.7 with all of the contracts.
Design.
Design and inspection.
Land purchase, inspection.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Alderman Holtfer.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, no nos, no absence, no abstentions. We move on to item H1, licenses, Alderman Nelson. You've got approval.
Down, we've got approval down to Daniel Mackey, with his approval of the letter. Page two, first two are approved, third one, Franklin Newton Lions Club will be contingent upon receipt of bartender's license.
Got to watch out for them.
I know, I know, I.
Is there a second?
I'm leaving it like that.
Is there a second? Uh, Alderman Holtfer. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to I, item I, vouchers. Is there a motion approving city vouchers and ending date April 1st, 2022, in the amount of $1,461,468.93, and payroll dated March 25th, in the amount of $445,783.45, and payments to various payroll deductions, in the amount of $452,305.83, plus city matching payments. And payroll for April, S, April 8th, estimated at $442,000, and payments to various payroll deductions, estimated at $275,000, plus city pad, matching payments. Property tax disbursements with a ending date of March 31st, in the amount of $4,595.6, and approval of release payment to Cory Oil in the amount of $6,199.28. Barbara and Mayor. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor.
Aye.
Alderman Holtfer.
Aye.
Motion carries, six ayes, no nos, no absence, no abstentions. For those of you watching on YouTube, we're going to conclude the streaming portion of tonight's programming, and we wish you a good evening, we all hear the, uh, the Star Spangled Banner here in a few minutes, uh, but, uh, we're going to terminate the streaming, and we possibly may come back, but that'll be a separate stream.